But when you leave, there will be poll workers at each exit from the auditorium. Please hand one of them your handset as you exit. You will receive immediate feedback when your vote is recorded. A successful yes vote will show a green light and 1A on the LCD screen. A successful no vote will show a green light and 2B on the LCD screen. If your vote does not register, you will see a red light and a circle with a line through it on the LCD screen. If you get a red light or no light at all, please raise your hand and a poll worker will bring you a new handset and will collect the non-functioning one from you. You may begin voting as soon as I close discussion on an article, on a motion, sorry. Okay? But when I announce, "Please vote now," a countdown clock will appear on the screen and you will have 10 seconds to finalize your vote. During that time, you may change your vote simply by pressing the other button from your original choice. So as I stated earlier, if you push the wrong button, that's okay. The last button you push before voting is closed is the vote that will register. In case, I will also point out, in case anyone is having, going to have trouble seeing the screen, this magic cube out front here will indicate that the countdown clock of 10 seconds is running, okay? It will be green when you may vote and it will be red when voting is closed. So that, if everybody can see, either that or that or both, we're good. When the countdown clock reaches zero, all votes are locked in and the results will appear on the screen. For articles where a two-thirds vote is required, the results will show first as numbers and then it will toggle to percentages so that you will be assured that the call by the moderator is correct and I won't have to do a lot of math on the fly. One final note, as has always been the case, only votes cast are counted. So adding the yes votes and no votes may produce different totals from article to article. This does not mean that there is something wrong, it means only that some voters chose to abstain on a particular article. Again, if your handset fails in some way, please raise your hand and a poll worker will bring you a new one and collect the non-functioning one. Since we learn best by doing, let's try a couple of sample votes. The question here is about how the town of Sherburne got its name. You should assume that my yammering here is a discussion about the question and that discussion is now closed. So I ask you to please vote now. Have we got a total, I mean, have we got a countdown clock here? Oh, sorry. Right. My mistake. Okay. So 117 people said, that said yes, this was the answer, and 71 said no. I believe the answer is actually correct, although, you know, whatever. So, as the moderator, I don't take a position on articles, so all of your votes are correct as far as I am concerned. So the motion passes because, all right. The next question, kind of afraid of this one. Will the Sox win the World Series? Okay? We're having a discussion now and pretending that we have been debating the question and that debate is now closed. I ask you to please vote now. Now, now.
Maybe you should say at this time. So it can sound like no.
Yes, that's a good point. Okay. If that was a positive motion that the Sox would win, I guess the motion fails. So, okay. So I think that we are, oh, I'm sorry, we have someone with a faulty clicker?
Maybe you could ask him to...
Yeah. Joe, can you go to the end of the aisle so that... Okay. Article one, annual report. This is a majority vote.
I move that the reports of the town officers and committees as contained in the annual report be accepted.
Second.
Okay. I will open discussion now.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes, Mrs. Lincoln.
I'd like to amend it. I move that the motion to accept be amended by adding the following after the word "accepted", quote, and that the Governance Task Force II is to continue until it completes its final report, period.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the amendment? Okay. Then I am closing debate on the amendment and please get ready. We are voting on the amendment, the addition of the words suggested by Mrs. Lincoln, "Please I'm going to hold on this for a minute till we get the countdown, until we get the countdown Do we have, can we get a countdown clock on just a yes and no here so that we can move along? Yeah. Okay. I'm just going to do a voice vote on this. All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So now we are voting on the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? No. Okay. Then the original motion is on the floor and I would ask you to please vote now. I'm sorry. They are working on it. This is, please have some patience. I think this will improve as time passes.
This is to move down.
All right. All right. Then we will do a voice vote on this article as well. On the motion, the main motion, that the reports of the town officers and committees as contained in the annual report be accepted as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes. All right. Articles two through seven are contained in a consent agenda. I will read the article, I will read the titles of the articles that comprise the consent agenda. As I do so, if you wish to call a hold on an article, please do so by calling out "hold" when the title of that article is read. Article two, supplemental appropriations for the current fiscal year 2019 budget. Article three, bond premiums and authorization rescission. Use of net premiums received by the town on the sale of any bonds or notes to pay down other bonds or to pay project costs and to rescind the borrowing authorization passed in 2008. Article four, internal transfer from enlargement fund for the care improvement embellishment and enlargement of town cemeteries. Article five, revolving funds. Set limits on expenditures from the following self-sustaining outside-the-budget revolving funds. That would be council on aging, board of health, recycling, town forest, farm pond, ambulance, and elder housing. Article six, transfer to the OPEB trust fund. Article seven, stabilization funds. Transfers to general stabilization fund and elder housing capital stabilization fund. Since no holds have been called, we will go straight to the motion. Mr. Leahy?
I move that articles two through seven be considered together as consent calendar articles, where such articles are routine and typically approved without significant debate and with such articles moved as written in the warrant and with the following additional information. Article two, the 2019 supplemental budget amounts with $260,000 to be transferred from free cash in the treasury for the purpose of supplementing the following fiscal year 2019 budget lines: snow and ice removal of $160,000 and police overtime of $100,000. Article three, I move that the town vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes therunder, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and further to rescind the affordable housing appropriation approved under Article 14 of the 2008 Annual Town Meeting. Article four, cemeteries. That $5,400 be transferred from the cemetery enlargement fund. Article five, the revolving fund fiscal year 2019 expenditure limits. Council on Aging revolving fund, $75,000. Board of Health revolving fund, $15,000. Recycling revolving fund, $860. Town Forest revolving fund, $30,000. Farm Pond revolving fund, $160,000, and to authorize a select board to expend such monies without further appropriation. The ambulance revolving fund is $300,000 and the elder housing revolving fund is $287,561. On Article six, the OPEB trust fund, that $100,000 be transferred from free cash. And finally, in Article seven, the general stabilization fund transfer $10,000 from free cash, that the elder housing capital stabilization fund transfer $25,000 from elder housing revolving fund.
Second.
Okay. There is no discussion, no debate on the consent calendar, so I would, debate is, well, debate isn't open or closed. There is no debate. So I would ask you to please vote now. Article three, I'm sorry, Article eight, FY '20 omnibus budget. Next fiscal year, this is a majority vote. Mr. Tsai.
I move that the totals for each department represented by the numbered items appearing in the advisory committee's fiscal year 2020 omnibus budget in the column under the heading "Recommended FY 2020" be called over by the moderator and, if no objection is made, that such amounts be raised and appropriated for the purpose specified, except that where a transfer is indicated by a numbered footnote, the specified amount shall be provided by such transfer, that the salaries for the various town officers, including those indicated by numbered footnotes, be fixed effective July 1, 2019, as specified in the omnibus budget that becomes effective pursuant to this motion, and that any item to which objection is made be separately considered and disposed of in accordance with the vote of the town.
Second. I will now read the totals for each department in the omnibus budget. As always, the full amounts for each component, salaries, and expenses are printed in the advisory report to the town, which I hope you have with you. Anyone wishing to comment on or question any amount may call "hold" when I read the department's name and amount, and I will set that line item aside. When the entire omnibus has been read, I will list the departments on which there have been holds and we will vote the unheld items. Then we will address separately any held items. Legal counsel, $80,000. Finance director, accounting, $285,889. Advisory committee, $3,813. Conservation commission, $60,083. I'm sorry, 50. Town clerk, $132,809. Is it eight or nine? Nine dollars. Election and registration, $25,584. Town buildings, $280,800. Fire and rescue, $412,813. Ambulance, $80,000. Dover Sherburne Regional School District, $9,569,88. Tri-County Vocational, $32,224. Norfolk Agricultural, $34,000. Community Maintenance and Development, $1,062,842. Snow and Ice, $83,918. Street lighting, $23,000, sorry, $22,000. Solid waste, $288,877. Recycling, $3,230. Board of Health, thank you, $141,152. Council on Aging, $153,011. Veterans, $6,490. Recreation, $15,000. Historical Commission, $1,300. Insurance and employee benefits, $2,895,160. Debt service, $1,355,881. Reserve account, $300,000. So we have a hold on the selectmen's budget. So I am going to ask now for your vote, for Mr. Tsai to move the unheld budgets.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Tsai.
I move to approve all of the non-held budget items.
Is there any discussion? All right. Hearing no discussion, I will close the debate portion and ask you to please vote at this Motion passes. Now we will address the hold on the selectmen's budget.
Robert Johnson, Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. In the note at the bottom there, it says 2A, selectman, chairman, zero, second member, zero, third member, zero. What about the fourth and fifth members?
They're making a lot.
Does anyone care to address Mr. Johnson's question?
Let me answer zero. Good catch.
Seeing no other discussion, I will ask for a motion on the selectmen's budget.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Tsai.
I move that $303,248 be approved for the select board budget.
Second. Okay. So there's no further debate on that. I will close debate now. Please vote at this time. Okay. Right. No, don't ignore the red. All right. Motion to selectmen's budget, please vote now at this time. So we're using the cube here. Okay. I'm sorry. So, motion passes. It was, the vote was 89... I would just like to confirm that with a hand count. All right. Voice vote, okay. Voice vote. All right. All in favor of the vote on, to move the, sorry.
Selectmen's budget.
On the selectmen's budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes. Article nine, capital improvement plan. Mr. Leahy?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Advisory will be making seven separate motions under Article nine.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
I move favorable action and that the treasurer with the approval of the select board be authorized to borrow for the purpose of acquiring breathing support equipment for the fire department, item A, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, the sum of $73,000 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, in accordance with MGL, Chapter 44, Section 20, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided however that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters and an election of a Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called debt exclusion question, pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 29C, subsection K.
Section 21.
Section 21. 21CK. A second.
I believe that Fire Chief Aaron Kinney has a presentation to make.
Good evening. This will be pretty quick. So for the capital request for the fire department, we have this breathing air cascade system. This device, and what you see, is a...
Section twenty-one.
Section twenty-one.
Twenty-one CK.
I second.
I believe that Fire Chief, Aaron Kenny, has a presentation to make.
This will be pretty quick. So, for the capital request for the Fire Department, we have this breathing air cascade system. This device, and what you see, is a all-encompassing cabinet and storage for the breathing air that we use to breathe through the air tanks that you see us wearing. So, currently, our breathing air system is over twenty years old. It is missing many of the filters and OSHA-required requirements for breathing air quality as well as safety when refilling those air bottles. And with the state becoming a- or making municipalities be OSHA-compliant now, this became a priority for us to replace this year. So, that was- that cascade system improves, obviously, the breathing air quality, enhances personnel safety, and will allow us to be OSHA-compliant. And it provides for enhancing- enhancement of tracking of our resources in terms of our SCBAs, which is our self-contained breathing apparatus bottles, and allows us to be better track the air quality and to maintain a high level of service and making sure that our personnel safety is a number-one priority. The next component is the oxygen containment fill station. So, this is different in that this is the air that we provide you in the event of a medical emergency. So, we have smaller oxygen tanks, which we use in what we call our first-in medical bags. So, if we- in the- in the event we respond to your home and have to put you on oxygen, this is to refill the bottles that we use to provide oxygen for you as our citizens. Currently, we actually do not have a true transfer or fill station. The great ingenuity of the members of the community and of our department created a system many, many years ago, and it had- it worked up until, you know, well, probably it would stop being used a few years back, but I made the decision to definitely, we're not going to use it because there's no containment fill station at all. So, in the event we had a failure, wanted oxygen bottles, it would probably kill or severely injure one of our members. So, that system is not used at all right now. So, this would- that system would be used to, obviously, make that a safer process, make us OSHA-compliant, and also, over time, it should reduce operational costs because we do have what we call large- the large cylinders that we use in the ambulance and in the station as storage, which we're able to fill all of the oxygen bottles, including those that are used in the police cruisers and our apparatus as well, instead of having to pay external company to come in and fill those for us. So, that is the- the two items that are included in that seventy-three thousand dollars. So, obviously, enhancing personnel safety is a big priority, and being OSHA-compliant is a large priority for us. And the EMS side of things, or the EMS services we provide, you know, are the largest demand of service that we have in town, so the oxygen containment piece is very important. So, these are the two items, the oxygen single-unit fill station and the breathing air purification and cascade system for our- for our members and to provide you enhanced level of service.
Okay, so, since there is no discussion, I would ask you to please vote at this time. Motion passes. And, yes, can we have- I'm going to just declare a two-thirds on this because I think that's pretty clear. Article nine, Item B.
Madam Moderator.
CM and D air compressors and jackhammers. This is a two-thirds vote as well.
Thank you. I move favorable action and that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of purchasing a CM and D air compressor and two jackhammers, Item B, as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, the sum of twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called Debt Exclusion Question pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one CK.
Second. I believe that CMD Director, Sean Colleen, has a presentation to make. Sean, you're still intending to do them all right now for CM- yeah?
Madam Moderator, I'd like to do one presentation for the four articles.
That's great. You'll make a lot of friends that way.
So, although it's one motion so far, the first is the jackhammer, as we spoke of, also a wood chipper, a large tractor, and two pickups and other highway equipment. The compressor we currently have was purchased new in nineteen-seventy. It's a diesel compressor. It failed to run several times while the crew was out trying to do road work this year, so it was time to go. It also runs so poorly that it gets everyone sick when they're around it. The tractor we're replacing was purchased in nineteen-ninety-four. It was mostly used for the fields when we were mowing the Laurel Farm and the other fields. We use it quite often for roadside mowing, and we're using it beyond its useful life and expectancy, so we're going to- we're upgrading to a much larger tractor that- well, I'll talk more about that in a second. There it is. The new tractor has an enclosed cab, so we'll be able to use it in the winter for snow cleanup. The increased horsepower and the size will allow us to fill trucks, so we have one more piece of machinery that can be used to fill the sanders, and again, the existing ones from nineteen-ninety-four. Two pickups, we have a fleet of just three pickup trucks, two of which are not going to pass a DOT inspection this year without significant work. They're unreliable, they break down in the middle of snowstorms. We use those, obviously, daily for the foreman. We're also purchasing a tow behind blower. We were using the Regions blower this year to clear off the fields, and a water tank, brine sprayer. In the summer, it'll be used for transporting water, and in the winter, we'll use it for spraying brine on the roads for de-icing. And we're also going to upgrade our chipper. We have one, but it's rather small. Newer ones have a winch, which helps with increased safety. You can pull a full tree into it without needing a machine to load it, and obviously, humans to load it if it's too large to pick up. That's the end.
Great. Okay, is there any debate or discussion on...
On nine B.
On nine B only. That is the only one we will be voting on now. This is for the air compressor and two jackhammers. Yes, Mr. Yan?
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this article.
Is there any other comment or discussion? This is a two-thirds vote, and so I would ask you to vote at this time, nine B. Article passes by two-thirds. The count is one eighty to thirteen. Article nine, Item C.
Madam Moderator, may I make a few words of explanation before we present our motion?
Yes, Mr. Leahy.
In the warrant, you'll see that Article nine C for material processing equipment capital request is for ninety-six thousand dollars from CM and D. In the last few weeks, CM and D came to us with a request for a reserve fund transfer from current year's budget to purchase a hot box asphalt recycler. The cost is thirty-five thousand dollars. Initially, CM and D had expected to ask the town for capital for this here in the capital request. However, advisory did, and as did the Select Board, recommend and authorize CM and D to take those funds, make the purchase in the past week or so, which allows CM and D to get work on some of the roadwork repairs that needed to be done. And so, for that reason, because this thirty-five thousand dollars has already been transferred from a reserve fund transfer to CM and D, and the hot box asphalt recycler has been purchased, we're going to make a change to the actual dollar amount being requested in Article nine, Section C, from ninety-six thousand dollars down to sixty-one thousand
So, Frank, can I have a motion now?
So, for Article nine, Item C, the CM and D material processing equipment, I move favorable action and that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of purchasing CM and D's material processing equipment, Item C, as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, the sum of sixty-one thousand dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called Debt Exclusion Question pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one CK.
Second.
So, Sean has already given his presentation on this. Is there any debate, comments?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Yan.
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this article.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, we will move to the vote on this. This is Article nine, Item C, CM and D processing equipment. Motion passes, one eighty to eighteen. Passes by two-thirds. Article nine, Item D, CM and D tractor. This is also a two-thirds majority.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, this is Aaron Yan.
I move favorable action and that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of purchasing and equipping- equipping a CM and D tractor, Item D, as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, the sum of seventy-five thousand, one hundred pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called Debt Exclusion Question pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one CK.
Second.
Is there any comment or discussion?
Madam Moderator, the Select Board voted unanimously to support this article.
Peter Black, fifty-five Maple Street. I just have a question. You're funding purchases of equipment that we've heard there is a life expectancy. Are these- are we financing these purchases with notes or bonds that coincide with the life expectancy? Are these thirty-year notes, five-year notes? What are we borrowing? How long are we going to be paying for it? Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Is there someone who can answer this question?
The statute act- the state statute actually tells you how long you can borrow an item, and you would have to make a case for- to borrow longer than that if your life expectancy of the vehicle or something. If you normally get longer than, say, ten years out of a vehicle, you could do that, but...
So, are there specific notes for each purchase?
With- with- no, the Treasurer issues bonds through an advisor, so each- it's not a separate bond for each item, it's one bond in total of whatever she's putting out to bond.
But it may- but they may have different due dates?
Yeah, the one bond may have six years on a vehicle, might have three years on a piece of equipment or something, or fifteen or twenty years if it's a bigger, long public works project, but they're all rolled into one bond.
Thank you.
Is there any other debate or discussion comment? Okay, then, we will vote on Article nine, Item D. Motion passes by two-thirds, one seventy to twenty-four. Article nine, Item E, CM and D, two pickup trucks with highway equipment, two-thirds majority.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Daley.
I move favorable action and that the Treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of purchasing and equipping CM and D, two pickup trucks with highway equipment, Item E, as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, the sum of one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called Debt Exclusion Question pursuant... question pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one, C-K.
Second.
Is there any comment or debate? Mr. Yan?
The select board voted unanimously to support this item.
Thank you. Is there any other comment or debate? Please approach the mic.
Karen Lane, fifteen Meadowbrook Road, Sherburne. My first question is, are these bonds issued by the town of Sherburne, sold by the town of Sherburne? Or are they state bonds?
These are town bonds issued through a bank.
And what is the bond rating of the town of Sherburne?
Right now, we're at triple A rating.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other question, comment, or debate? Okay, hearing none, I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes by two-thirds, one sixty-two to thirty-eight. Article nine, item F, town buildings, two-thirds vote.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Gallatano.
I move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of repair and/or renovation of town buildings, item F, as set forth in the advisory committee report and table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of three hundred thousand dollars pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, providing that said authorization to borrow shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorizing any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payments of the costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one, C-K.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a presentation here from Mr. Colleen.
Town buildings improvements.
I don't think your mic is on.
Better?
Yep.
So we have several different categories. We have town campus projects, gutters and masonry work at the police station, the town hall, entryway, and handicap ramp. I have pictures of several of these. And replace remaining original siding and trim on the main fire station. And then, of course, there's quite a few smaller projects, which were all included in the insight, the onsite insight report from several years ago. The town campus projects, most of which were obviously trying to get done while we're finishing up the library, which we hope to be this calendar year. The library, of course, isn't responsible for paving the entire parking lot, but it's all due to be paved. Exterior lighting, we're in the process of replacing throughout the town hall. Both buildings are twenty years old, the town hall and the police station, so the lighting's old. There's also while we're paving, there's some, there's a pinch point at the rear of the police station lot that we've already started to fix, so we, we'll finish that, obviously, when we pave. And then there's a contingency for unforeseen engineering, for the upgrades that are going to be done to town hall in conjunction with the library generator. The police station, when it was built, for probably cost reasons, they took the gutters off the building before it was, before it was built, or they took them out of the design. That's not a good situation. The water falls on people's heads as they're walking in the doors, ice forms. You can see most of that in pictures. It also is degrading the brickwork on the front and the rear of the building. There's a picture of ice right in front of the front door of the building. The fire station, last year, you noticed, we did the doors, we also did the siding on the front, but the cement board siding that's on the rest of the building needs to be replaced, so we need to finish that. We couldn't do that in conjunction with the project because we didn't have enough funding for the entire building. That was somewhat a new project we weren't aware of when we started. There's some pictures of the failing siding with mildew and failed trim on the side of the elevator shaft. And the gutters have rotted the, the trim boards above. Those are the main projects.
Okay. Okay, is there any comment, questions, debate on this? Okay, I see someone.
Hi, Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. Just a clarification, on line item one, we have the word campus paving, and then also under line item three in there, we also have campus paving. What's the difference between the two and why are they on two different lines? Thank you.
Sean?
I'm trying to find what slide she was referring to.
I think she's, I think she's talking about the advisory report.
Well, the first slide was a recap of the several different projects that are encompassed in it. We're only going to pave the parking lot once, if that's the question.
Is there any other comment? Mr. Yan?
Note that item, woman at three, is paving of campus work, not inclusion of the library. Woman at one is the library paving.
Is there any other comment, questions? Okay, then, the motion has been moved and seconded. So I would ask you to please vote at this time. Motion passes by two-thirds, one sixty-six to twenty-seven. Article nine, item G, Sherburne School Committee renovations to Pine Hill School, two-thirds.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Kauschel.
I move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purpose of Pine Hill School reservations, or sorry, renovations. Item G is set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars pursuant to General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, Part one, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided that said authorization to borrow shall expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And in accordance with General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, authorize any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, to be applied to the payment of costs approved hereunder, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Prop. Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one, C, sub-K.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion or comment?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Yan.
The select board voted unanimously to support this item.
Is there any further discussion or comment? Okay, then I will open the voting. Please vote now. Motion passes by two-thirds, one eighty-two to eleven. One eighty-two to eleven. All right, Article ten, transfer from stabilization, tree cleanup, two-thirds.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Sai.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to transfer one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the general stabilization fund to CMND for purposes of removal of dead and/or dangerous roadside trees, including all incidental and related costs.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. I believe Mr. Colleen has a presentation.
This'll be brief, and it's the last time I'm coming up here. I don't think I need to make much of a presentation for everyone in here to know that there's a lot of dead trees in town. The gypsy mots, drought from a few years ago, and a couple consecutive years took their toll. I want to show a map. DCR goes out and flies over the entire state every year, and they map out the extent of deforestation. So this was done at the end of the 2017 season. You can see it's almost a million acres. The uppermost portion of the red is Sherburne. It, it, it came from Rhode Island, it came up into town, it hit the south side of town, so if you live on the north side of town, you didn't see it as bad yet. We're not sure if you're gonna, we can't really predict exactly what they're going to do each year. We're a few years out from the drought, so the trees are a little more healthy. But that doesn't get the dead trees down to the ground. Last year, once we kind of cleared through the fog of the March storms, we went out and did an assessment and found at least five hundred dead oak trees. Those are dead, like, didn't leaf out at all. We estimated at least another two hundred leafed out and then gave up. It was their final straw. By July or August, they were showing signs that they were just dead. It costs about twice as much to take trees down in an emergency than it does if you plant it out. Cranes are expensive. When it's not planned, you usually only get one tree down, maybe two, in a day versus planting it out and setting up and taking maybe six, maybe ten. It's obviously much more dangerous to leave them standing and find out that they're going to fall after they start to. We work with EverSource closely. Everyone has seen the Stanley Tree crews. Most of the time, they're working for EverSource in town. We do also use them. They probably spend at least five times more than we have this past year. EverSource has deep pockets, but their priorities are a little different than ours. Their priorities are their infrastructure. So if you have a dead oak tree across the street from wires, they may not choose to take it. That's their decision. So we've gone in a couple areas where they started and we, we finished the work. Bullard Street being one of them this week. If anyone has tried to travel down there, it's been closed at least one lane, and that's why. That's it.
Okay, is there any comment or debate on this motion that's on the floor?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Yan.
The select board voted unanimously to support Article ten.
Any further comment or debate? Okay, then. Debate being closed. Open the voting, and I would ask you to please vote at this time. Motion passes by two-thirds, one seventy-seven to nine. Article eleven, transfer from free cash, tree cleanup. This is a majority.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
This article was inserted in case Article ten, which requires a two-thirds majority vote, did not pass. As Article ten has now passed, I move no action on Article eleven.
I second that motion.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this? Okay, hearing no debate, we will move to the voting. All right, when it is time for you to vote, no action means that you are defeating this article and that we will appropriate no money from free cash to deal with the tree problem. So you want to vote yes to defeat this? I'm sorry. Oh, hey, smarter. Okay. So the motion passes? For no action, ninety-seven to eighteen. Article twelve, use of free cash.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Leahy.
I move that no action be taken on this article.
Second.
This is another no action article. If you wish to take no action on this, you would vote yes. Is there any comment or debate? All right, seeing none, hearing none, please vote at this time. Okay, I think they are all not working. I will take a voice vote on this. All in favor of no action on Article eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'm sorry, Article twelve. Forgive me. Article twelve. Motion passes. No action. All right, I, as I served on the committee for this, as an ex officio member, I am going to leave the stage for the next article and turn this over to Corey Lincoln, who is assistant moderator for the evening.
Good evening. Article thirteen, electronic voting.
Ms. Lincoln?
Yes.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to raise, I move favorable action and that the town vote to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to supplement the FY twenty twenty elections and registration budget to provide for the use of electronic voting at town meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes, in the rear.
Richard Robinson, 117 Mills Street. I was gonna ask how much this is gonna cost. Thank you for attaching a number to it. I'm against spending that money. I'd much rather spend that $5,000 on the many things we need here in town. I don't really mind waiting around for the very, very few votes that require a paper ballot. I do mind spending $5,000 where we don't need to, and clearly we do not need to right here.
Yes, in the rear.
I'm Carol Rubenstein, 57, Old Field Drive. I'd like to suggest that we hold off voting on this until the end of town meeting because I'm not sure we've given a good test. I haven't had total success with my second, whatever you call this device, and I'd like to see how well it works through the rest of town meeting before I vote on this article.
Yes, if, excuse me, I saw a hand raised here. If you would like to speak, please go around and stand in line to speak at one of the mics. Yes, in the rear.
Christine Cooney, 55, Maple Street. I think although it seems a little cumbersome now, just in our experience we've had for the last hour and a half, that if you recall some of our other town meetings where there's been very contentious votes, where even if it's not very contentious, where the vote has been very close to even, where votes have had to be counted and recounted handheld and then a ballot, it can be extremely time-consuming. Plus, the voting machine, the voting electronically gives anonymity. I think it's really the most democratic way to go, and I strongly urge people to support this.
Yes, next in the rear.
April Contini, Mills Street. Can I have clarification on that $5,000? Is that per night? Or how many uses do we get out of that lease?
Yes, is there someone from the committee who could answer the question? Wasim?
Yes, it is per use.
Per night?
Yeah, meaning per night. Yeah, per night. That's the cost of renting the system for one day of town meeting.
Yes, there's a comment in the rear.
Good evening. My name is Susan Gooch. I live at 104 Nason Hill Road here in Sherburne. I'm in favor of this device, and one of the reasons is, or many reasons, is the digitization of our, modernization of our world today. By the use of this electronic device, we are saving on the cost of the paper and are saving our trees as well as the people and the trucks which need to drive the paper to the location and all the work that's involved behind it, which I think the justification for $5,000 greatly exceeds what it would cost for us to do the math if we did it the old-fashioned way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, was there another comment?
Carol Rubenstein, can I offer an amendment so that we can delay the vote until the end of town meet, the last article?
Well, what we'd have to do at this point is to take a motion to consider something out of order, which would require a two-thirds vote, and we'd have to take that vote and then we could move it to the end, if that is your proposal.
That would be my proposal.
Could you come and get one of the forms and fill that out and we can consider that?
Sure.
I'm going to have Carol Marple, who was on, an ex officio member of the committee, speak from up here.
I was just going to answer Susan Gooch's question. It's me, apparently. I wanted to answer Susan's question about eliminating the waste of paper. We would still have the paper at every meeting as a backup should the electronic clickers fail.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, in the rear.
Okay, Daniel Murphy, Bear Hill Road. So I work for Dover Sherburne Cable Television. As such, I've sat on Dover's town meetings, which does use the, does use an electronic voting system. I'm not sure if this is the best option for electronic voting system. I can say that, that the system in Dover has sped up the meetings. Some meetings that take two nights, take one night, and when considering the cost of this, what should also be considered is the cost of carrying the town meeting into another night because that is going to obviously incur additional costs in which the $5,000 may be worthwhile. Just something I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Wasim. I have a note here from Mary saying I should call on you. Were you going to make a presentation on behalf of the committee?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Why don't you go ahead and do that now? I apologize.
Oh, sure.
So as Mary mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the Electronic Voting Committee was, was formed as a result of an article in last year's annual town meeting. And the charge of the committee is to survey and investigate available options for electronic voting and to assess their applicability to our town meeting, in Sherburne. So we went through a methodical process of researching the different electronic voting options. We identified the driving needs for considering electronic voting in Sherburne. We, for example, the speed, the privacy of the vote. When we started out, speed was probably, you know, one thing on my mind certainly, but integrity of the vote is very important. Sometimes it's hard for a moderator to be able to tell if it's a two-third vote or not, and so we go to a paper ballot, which again goes back to the speed. There's another aspect that also we came to learn about from surveying other towns, which is the privacy. A lot of voters appreciate being able to vote without peer pressure. Then we researched the available technologies. We eliminated options that were not, we did not deem applicable. So for example, there are many options where you can vote with your mobile phone. We surveyed also and obtained feedback from other towns in the Commonwealth. There are so many other towns that are using electronic voting. Some towns have used it, I think, for a decade now and more. We, in particular, I listed here Dover, Westwood, and Avon used actually the same system that we're piloting tonight. We compiled a report and we provided that to the Select Board. We recommend the system that we are piloting tonight for a variety of reasons. Cost is one of it, one of them, but anonymity. So there's, I believe Mary mentioned this at the beginning, there's no association between, between the clicker that you have and between you. So there's no, there's no record that says that a particular person voted this way or that way. The security, this system uses industry-standard security, so there's, you know, that's important as well. User-friendly, so with the exception of sometimes the adding last-minute slides when amendments show up, all the slides, as you can see, are prepared with the, with the voting capability and it's usually smooth. Again, the price, as mentioned, it's about $3,400 plus travel expense if we need a support person for this purpose. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, Carol, are you in the back? Would you like to make your motion?
I move to take Article 13 out of order and vote this article after all the other articles have been decided.
Thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to take this article out of order, to move it to the end of the evening. This requires a two-thirds vote. Can I ask the, the clicker, clicker people? Are we equipped to do a clicker on this? Yes, okay. If you want to move the vote on this article to the end of the warrant, hopefully tonight? Okay, never mind. We're not using the clickers. We're gonna try a voice vote on two-thirds. All in favor of the postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
Oh, okay. Let's, let's try a show of yellow cards. All in favor of? Um, hold on to your yellow cards. I think we're going to get a chance to vote with the clicker. Are we good to go? Ooh, yes. Please click now. The motion fails. It required a two-thirds for passage. So we will return to a vote on the article itself. Are you guys ready for that? Okay. Please vote now. Ah, the motion passes. It was a simple majority for this.
Article 14, Recreation Revolving Fund Type.
Madam Moderator?
This is Arahrunian.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to rescind acceptance of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53d, which established a Recreation and Park Services Revolving Fund and established in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53e and one-half, a new Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund by amending Chapter 28 of the general bylaws revolving funds, inserting a new row as printed in the warrant, and to transfer all funds in the existing revolving fund into the newly created fund and therefore to establish an FY 2020 spending limit for such revolving fund at $200,000.
Second.
Is there any comment or debate on this? Ah, okay. I was not aware of that.
Hello?
There we go. So just to help explain what we're asking for here, it's essentially a change of the revolving fund type for recreation. Right now, we are under what's called, under 53d, which limits us to $10,000 in terms of what we can carry over from one year to the other. And the request is to move to a 53e and a half, which will give us essentially a spending limit, but the ability to carry over any funds that recreation generates within the year.
If I could just interrupt for one minute. Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, sorry. I'm Dave Goldberg. I'm the Chair of the Recreation Commission. Thank you. For those of you who don't know, recreation primarily is self-funded. So through the programs that we run within the town, such as Snappers or Summer Go Round, as well as leasing out our fields to the various sports teams, so lacrosse and soccer and so forth. Over the past few years, we've actually been able to increase our revenue, which is, which is great. We've offered many more programs to the town. However, as I said, there's, we're only allowed to keep so much of that money from year to year. One of the, one of the issues that we run into is in the spring when we generate the most, the majority of our money is right around, is essentially when the fiscal year changes. So we generate all of our money in the beginning of the year, sorry, towards the end of the fiscal year, and we can only keep $10,000 of it over to the, to the next fiscal year. So you can imagine, we bring in all of our money on one side and we have to essentially spend it down to $10,000 into the next, into the next fiscal year. All right, I think I said most of that. The reason why we're asking to keep more of the money from fiscal, from one year to the next is we have a lot of deferred maintenance within our recreation facilities. So those of you who've been out on the fields, at the tennis courts, you can see that there's a significant amount of stuff that has been left essentially unfixed for quite some time. If you play tennis, you'll notice that the majority of the lights don't work. If you've been over to Laurel Farm, you'll notice that things like the, the car barriers are all rotten and need to be replaced. If you've been over to Jameson, you'll notice that things like the dugouts are old and need to be replaced and are currently somewhat of a safety hazard because we can't see into the dugouts from the street. So I'd rather not, because rec generates money itself, and we believe that we can, we can save up enough money over the years to actually tackle some of these capital expenses, we're asking that we are able to keep the money from year to year, our excess, and essentially save it from year to year to apply to some of the capital expenses that we have. This is not unheard of. There's, we actually voted on Article 5 today. There's a number of other committees that are already on a 53e and a half. Just rec was not, is not one of them currently. This doesn't cost the town any more money. Essentially, we're saving the money that we generate within the rec commission, within the rec committee from year to year so that we can take that excess money and put it towards some of the capital projects that we have, and essentially take care of a lot of the deferred maintenance that we have in our fields and other facilities today. That's it.
Thanks. And I do remember now that you sent me the presentation. It's been a busy two days, so I apologize. Okay, so the article has been moved and seconded. Is there any comment or questions on this? Okay, then. I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes, 182 to 4. Article 15, Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Board of Trustees. This is a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Daley?
I move favorable action and that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 55c, establishing an affordable housing trust fund and creating a board of trustees, and to authorize the Select Board to draft a trust agreement in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 55c.
Second.
All right, I believe we have a presentation here from Addie May.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Article 15 is a continuation of the work that the Housing Partnership did, starting with the work when we wrote the Housing Production Plan and had it approved in 2017, thanks to a lot of work from people in town. And this is a, asking to establish essentially, within the guidelines of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 55C, basically a holding place for funds, however they're received, whether they're gifts in kind, donations of land, any funds that need to be managed for the purposes of creating affordable housing. At this time, we do not have any mechanism to accept funds. We are not asking at this time for any funds from the town of Sherburne, from you. We are simply asking for authorization to create a fund where these funds could, where that could manage this in the event that they come up. And so there's guidelines that are established by the state for what a local housing trust can do. Basically, there's, if, in the event that funds were received perhaps from a negotiation with a developer, or there were instances where if an affordable unit, for whatever reason, goes in foreclosure, and there's funds that come from that, that we want to be able to manage and create small-scale affordable housing, this would be the way that we would eventually be able to. We can use it to renovate existing homes. We can use it to make sure that we don't lose any of our current SHI units. But again, at the end of the day, we are simply asking you to vote to authorize the town to establish this fund, to have a board of trustees to manage this fund, and we are not asking for any additional funding. I'm going to end my presentation at this point. I'm hoping that it's pretty clear to everyone that this is a fairly low-risk ask of everyone, and without it, we might have some issues down the road as we continue to manage our 40B situation with having a fund where at least mutual, if not better. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Durentis.
The Board of Select unanimously supports this article. We simply need to do more for affordable housing and have more tools available in our toolbox to address the challenges that are coming at us. We urge your support.
Someone's at the back mic, I think.
Yes, Neil Kessler, 43 Page Farm Road. I would also encourage a yes vote on this. When I was first on the Housing Partnership Committee, there's really very little we could do other than sort of weigh in on projects. There weren't any funds or anything of that sort, and we were always looking for ways to encourage affordable housing development. And I think that, you know, adoption of this isn't just to create a mechanism to receive funds, but the authorizing law, state law, allows you, allows the trust to accept property by gift, grant, or contribution, purchase and retain property, borrow money. It's just going to be an essential clearinghouse and an entry point for anybody coming in and wants to do affordable housing in our town. And I just think it's, we need to do more than this, but I think this is an essential first step, so I'd support it.
Is there any other comment, questions, debate? Okay, hearing none. Then we will move to the voting, and I ask you to vote at this time. Motion passes. 185 to 6. Article 16. Department Title Change. Community Maintenance and Development, CMND, to Department of Public Works, DPW. This is a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Gallatano?
I move favorable action and that the town vote to change the name of the Community Maintenance and Development, CMND, to the Department of Public Works, DPW, and further to replace all references in the town bylaws to Community Maintenance and Development with Department of Public Works, and all references in the town bylaws to CMND with DPW.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comment, questions, debate? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this article. In our discussion, we felt that although Community Maintenance and Development is a unique name in Sherburne, and there was some quaintness to that, the reality is that it can sometimes be problematic when applying for either state grants or compliance. Just recently, for the EPA National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit, we even had to put down, you know, who executes this permit? We just put down DPW, because we knew they'd understand that. They're seeing 260 permits come in all at once, and we didn't want to unusually flag something. And if we apply for either tip or mass works or any infrastructure grants, we felt it'd be better to actually have a more common name, rather than kind of something unusual that might just either raise flags or rise questions to our abilities to do the work.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hook?
Frank Hook, Town Line Road. I just have a question about costs on this. Would there be any costs to changing signage, changing logos, letterheads, paperwork, anything like that that's not indicated in this warrant article?
Does someone want to address that question? Sean? Or even if you don't, would you?
No cost.
Okay. All right. The motion has been moved and seconded, and debate is done. So I would ask you to please vote at this time. Okay. Motion passes. 161 to 7. Article 17.
Madam Moderator?
Just let me read the title here. Amend General Bylaws With Respect to Rules and Procedures at Town Meeting. This will be a majority vote. Mr. Cuswell?
All right. I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by inserting a new Section 8 into Chapter 2 as printed in the warrant, so that the town clerk is authorized to assign appropriate numbers or letters to bylaw sections, subsections, paragraphs, and subparagraphs where none are approved at town meeting for purposes of clarity and removing obvious abnormalities or errors in numbering or lettering.
Second.
Is there any comment, question, debate? Okay, hearing none. I would ask you to vote now, please. Motion passes. 176 to 3. Article 18. Amend General Bylaws With Respect to Bow Hunting. This is also a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Sae?
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend Chapter 8, Section 1 of the General Bylaws as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Is there any comment, question, debate? Hearing none. I would ask you to vote now, please. Motion passes. 168 to 12. Article 19. Amend General Bylaws With Respect to Information Technology Manager. This is a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Waldron?
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend Chapter 3, Section 6.2 of the General Bylaws, Power and Duties of the Town Administrator, to add Information Technology Manager to the Town Administrator's existing responsibilities by inserting a new subsection H as printed in the warrant, and re-letter the remaining subsections accordingly.
I second the motion.
I believe we have a presentation here from the Governance Committee.
Good evening. I'm Corey Lincoln of 10 Great Rock Road and Chairperson of the Governance Task Force II, which was authorized by a vote at last year's town meeting to recommend changes in the structure of town governance after reviewing past reports and looking at best practices of other small towns. In Phase 1 of our work, we interviewed all major town department heads and committee chairpersons about their responsibilities, what worked well for them, what did not work well, and what changes would help them perform more effectively and efficiently. Roughly a dozen topics of concern emerged from these interviews. Four of them are reflected in the four warrant articles our committee is sponsoring tonight. Other concerns we felt did not rise to the level of warrant articles will be addressed in a letter to the Select Board after town meeting, and a few more general concerns will be discussed in our final report. In Phase 2, we investigated how the 10 smallest towns in Middlesex County, of which Sherburne is number three, deal with the topics of concern. And in Phase 3, we surveyed Sherburne residents about their confidence in town governance and the subjects of our proposed warrant articles. The most frequently mentioned frustration in our town hall and committee interviews was information technology inefficiency. We have incompatible systems between and even within some departments that prevent direct sharing of data. This interferes with workflow, necessitates duplicative effort, and increases the possibility of errors. Departments make IT decisions in isolation and may not coordinate with other potential users of the same technology. Some departments use more cutting-edge technology, while others are considerably behind the curve. We do not have town-wide data security standards and practices. We do not use systematic digital filing to replace overflowing paper files and ease overcrowded offices. In short, we have failed to reap the benefits of a coordinated and comprehensive IT strategic plan. Article 19 will give the town administrator the authority and scope to act as the town's information technology manager. Broad IT oversight will be coordinated in one central place. The town can then develop a comprehensive IT strategic plan that will reduce obstacles to information flow, improve work efficiency, facilitate system sharing among departments, implement town-wide data security practices, begin systematic virtual file storage, consolidate budgeting, maximize bulk purchase savings, and position us for development of a common database and resident portal. This article is consistent with the best practices recommended by the Department of Revenue, and it also has the approval of the current town administrator.
Are there any comments, questions, debate? Okay. Hearing none. Just hold on a minute till we switch over here.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Yan?
The Select Board voted unanimously to support this warrant article.
Thank you. All right, then, I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes. 179 to 10. Article 20. Amend General Bylaws With Respect to Human Resources Director. This is a majority vote.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Leahy?
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend Chapter 3, Section 6.2 of the General Bylaws, Power and Duties of the Town Administrator, to authorize the town administrator, acting as the town's Human Resources Director, to delegate to a qualified human resources professional any or all of the functions specified in said Section 6.2E, and for such purposes to insert at the end of the introductory paragraph of Section 6.2E the following, and they delegate to a qualified human resources professional any or all of the following functions.
Second.
Presentation?
The resolution of human resource issues was another concern frequently mentioned in our interviews. Article 20 will give the town administrator, who already serves as the Human Resources Director, the authority to delegate some or all of the HR Director's functions to a qualified human resource professional when necessary or appropriate. While most personnel situations can be handled in-house, some would benefit from the expertise and efficiency of an outside HR specialist. This is especially appropriate in a small-town setting when the involved parties want assurance of complete neutrality, or if the town administrator must recuse him or herself, or if the situation is particularly urgent. Ready access to an outside specialist can be very important. Now the town administrator has to seek authorization from the Select Board to engage an outside consultant. This article would streamline and clarify the TA's authority to independently take that action. Also, resolution of some situations tends to be time-consuming, and use of a specialist will free the town administrator to focus on other responsibilities. This article clarifies that HR functions may be delegated to a qualified specialist when the town administrator, on her or his own authority, deems it necessary. It has the support of the current town administrator and Select Board.
Is there any comment, questions, debate on this motion? All right. If we can switch over here. I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes. 172 to 9. Article 21. Designate Treasurer as an Appointed Office. This is a majority vote. We have a presentation. Oh, sorry. Let's have the motion first, please.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Madrazo?
I move favorable action and that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 1B, to make the elected office of treasurer an appointed office, such office to be appointed by the Select Board for a term not to exceed three years, provided, however, that such change shall not take effect unless approved by the voters at the 2020 annual town election, and further, that any incumbent holding office at the time of acceptance will serve out the remainder of the elected term.
Second.
We have a presentation?
Approval of Article 21 will move the position of town treasurer from elected to appointed. Town treasurer is a highly skilled position that executes many complicated legal requirements, but does not make public... but does not make public policy. It is closely regulated and audited. While Sherburne’s population has not grown significantly, technologies, financial options, and state mandates have increased exponentially and continue to do so. Performing the duties of Treasurer has become increasingly complex. Our town is no longer well-served by a structure from a simpler time. Here are some reasons why we should change. First, candidates for elected office in Sherburne must be Sherburne residents. Up to now, qualified and willing to seek election as Treasurer, but we cannot assume that will always prove proactive, no viable candidates within the town. Moving to an appointed Treasurer will cast the widest possible net for qualified applicants, adding non-residents and campaign-shy residents to the pool. Second, appointment will promote the best practices of hiring: verification of qualifications, vetting of references, and thorough interviews. Third, appointment will allow closer monitoring of job performance. We do have a process for removing elected financial officials who have demonstrated serious failures, but the process does not address lesser deficiencies. Appointment will allow job performance to be evaluated by a supervisor at shorter intervals, and if there is a problem, appropriate action, remediation, or removal can be taken immediately; no need to wait for the next election. Fourth, appointment will facilitate succession planning. Currently, a non-resident assistant is trained at Sherburne’s expense but is ineligible to step into the Treasurer’s position should it become vacant. A non-resident assistant seeking advancement has no choice but to go to another town, taking along our training and institutional knowledge. And fifth, appointment will coalesce the Finance Department under the leadership of the Finance Director to allow for more effective establishment of departmental goals based on overall town needs and priorities. There are some concerns we’ve heard. First, the Treasurer should be independent from other officials. This arises from concern that an appointed official might be asked to do something unethical by a supervising official and should have the freedom to refuse, protected by having been elected. Such abuse of power is unfortunately possible in all organizations and should more properly be addressed by HR reporting rather than by election. Second, Sherburne residents care more about the job. We believe that good employees take pride in their work ethic and honest character wherever they are employed. Several of our staff assistants are not Sherburne residents, but from our experience, they care very much about their jobs and serving the people of Sherburne. Residency is no substitute for good hiring practices. At the same time, appointment does not prevent the best applicant from being a Sherburne resident. Third, we’ve already been down this road. We did at several town meetings to feed a motion to combine Treasurer and Collector and to make the new position Appointed. The single issue of moving Treasurer from elected to appointed has been considered twice, once losing by five votes. So why did we bring it up again? The short answer is, good ideas don’t die. When our committee began its work in 2018, we reviewed, listened, and deep-dived into similar towns, looking for best practices that could help Sherburne move forward in continuous improvement. Appointment of the Treasurer still emerges as a best practice. Seven of the ten smallest Middlesex towns have appointed Treasurers or Treasurer Collectors. Collins, DOR, and Strategic Management all advise moving to appointment. I’m really getting dry. Sherburne is a small town, trying to strike a balance between adapting to modern needs and retaining the best of traditional character. We must maximize efficiency and effectiveness of the first in order to keep the second. Change is always challenging, but when there are sound reasons to change, refusing to do so chokes innovation and stops improvement dead in its tracks. Our current Town Treasurer was appointed to fill an unexpired term. All indications say she’s doing a fine job, and she does not oppose this article. Our recommendation of Article 21 is based on what is best for the town and not intended to reflect on any individual. We urge you to support Article 21.
Thank you. We have a presentation in opposition to this article as well. Nancy?
Nancy Hess, excuse me, 64 South Main. Nancy Hess, 64 South Main Street, and your Collector. Please do not give up your right to elect your financial officers. I was asked if I would support this article if the Collector’s position was not included in this year’s warrant. This is not about me or about Heidi, and it’s not about the people on the Select Board. It is about the structure that will serve the town the best through the years regardless of the people in place. The independence of the elected officers adds another layer of checks and balances especially necessary in a small-town operation, and the personal commitment of the elected officer to the community has been of great value to us through the years. No matter how you couch it, this article is about consolidation of power and with it, the repositioning of authority. The appointing authority becomes the office authority, even though that appointing authority is itself an elected board that has no requirement of knowledge of municipal finance or the laws that govern it. Your financial officers should remain elected for as long as we have residents who will step up and assume that responsibility. It is a huge responsibility both on a municipal level and a personal level. A bond of over $100,000 is on the heads of both these officers. With that responsibility should go the authority to act according to the very specific state statutes. Your financial officers should remain independent of the day-to-day politic and personal agendas that can compromise the integrity of the office. After 30 years in town hall, I can say unequivocally that had I been appointed, I would not have survived the politic, and I certainly would not have been comfortable to stand before you now to oppose all of my esteemed colleagues on any of these articles. There are already multiple layers of oversight. You authorize what we spend and borrow. The Select Board has to sign off on any outgoing money through the warrant process and sign off on any authorization to borrow. They have a significant amount of oversight. Then we answer to the Department of Revenue, the rating agencies, the annual outside auditor, and the inside auditor, who is your Finance Director/Town Accountant and who works directly for the Select Board. She does ongoing reconciliations of the accounts in both the Tax Office and the Treasurer’s Office to make sure we are on track with those appropriations. The Select Board already has the authority, to a point, should a vacancy occur out of the normal election cycle. A provision you adopted last year to remove or to censure these officers for not doing their job, for doing their job poorly, or doing their job dishonestly, is a protection also initiated at the Select Board level, and a censure is a pretty strong negative job evaluation. The Treasurer’s job has always been complex, but the complexities change. Ongoing education is necessary, whether you’re new or seasoned, and there will always be a learning curve, whether newly appointed or newly elected. The only thing about the Collector or Treasurer’s job that cannot be taught is work ethic and honesty. The Electric has been very good at vetting that for us, and the MCTA, Mass. Collectors and Treasurers Association, is a terrific network of all kinds of job-related support to help even the seasoned navigate the waters. There is no great pool of applicants across the state. The graying workforce has alarmed the Department of Revenue, the Mass. Municipal Association, and the Mass. Collectors and Treasurers Association, and steps are being taken to encourage a next generation of candidates. Our last two financial appointees, the Accountant/Finance Director Sharon and Treasurer Heidi, did not come from the municipal world but are proving rapidly that they are up to the task and an asset to the town. The prior Accountant/Finance Director Appointee did come from the municipal world with a pedigree a mile long and a pocketful of nondisclosure agreements and brought us to the brink of disaster in less than a year. There are no guarantees, appointed or elected, but with the brain trust we have in our own town, hopefully there will always be someone willing and able to step up and serve in the two elected positions so we can maintain the independence and integrity of the offices. And if they’re doing a good job, we have always shown appreciation by re-electing them. That risk should not deter anyone from considering the job. History confirms that. As far as upward mobility is concerned, if we treat people right, fair working conditions, fair compensation, respect and appreciation for what they do, we will get a fair return. I have had my assistant for over 17 years, and only once did she consider another job, another assistant job, though fully qualified to be a Collector, and it was all about compensation. She also serves as the Assistant Treasurer. She knows that she’s an integral part of any transition plan to support a new Collector upon my departure, and will be there if she receives fair compensation and support.
Please finish up, Nancy.
This is about keeping the integrity, the independence, the responsibility, and the authority in these jobs, and how they can endure the test of time with changing players and continue to serve you best, and it is about you being able to have a say in that. Keep your right to vote and say no to this article. Once again, please.
I’ll now open debate.
Madam Moderator.
Yes. Mr. Morrell.
The Select Board voted in a majority to support this article, mainly based on the recommendations from the Government Task Force and their excellent work on this, that we need to be, have the ability to hire the best for an important job like the Treasurer. We feel that, as it’s been brought up, the Finance Director that we had before, had she not been appointed or in a position like that, that would have been much harder to remove her as soon as we did. So I think this gives the town flexibility for a position that’s very important.
Is there any other question, comment? I have several here, but Robert, come ahead.
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. I’m in favor of keeping what we have. I think it’s important to have checks and balances, whether on the national level, the state level, or the town level. I think that’s really important. I think the Collins Report has a problem where they have one recommendation that fits all towns. Regardless of what the input is from the different towns, their recommendations are always the same, and one size does not necessarily fit all. So let’s keep our checks and balances. Thank you.
I’ll take the rear.
Don Crawshaw, 198 Western Avenue. I support keeping the election of the Town Treasurer who would be answerable to the voters of the town and not to the few people or person who would appoint him or her.
George.
George Morgan, 41 Bear Hill Road. As voters, we would like to believe that when we actually achieve a majority vote on a matter of town business, that the matter voted upon will then rest with that majority vote. Such is not the case with Article 21, an article that has appeared on at least two previous warrants, and that on each occasion has been voted down by a majority of the voters at those town meetings. Once again, this article asks us to surrender our right as citizens to elect our Town Treasurer. Once again, no claim is made that there has been any abuse of the office, no claim of any inability of the office to competently perform the requirements of the office. Reasons that have been advanced for this article are speculative and not based on any current evidence, including imagined future complexity of the job beyond what the elected Treasurer could handle, imagined future need for frequent oversight of Treasurer’s job performance, imagined future need for increased accountability of the Treasurer to be to a supervisor. A further reason advanced for this article, absence of candidates for the office. This is not a reason for altering the position from an elected position to an appointed position. As has already been demonstrated in the case of our current Treasurer, that under such circumstances, the Select Board may appoint someone to the position. Doing so does not require that the position thereafter cease to be a position for which the Treasurer may be elected. The sponsors of this article cite that their purpose for the Article 21 is efficient workflow, resident satisfaction with the Treasurer, and functioning job structure. At present, the work of the Treasurer’s office is flowing efficiently. Residents are satisfied with the performance of the Treasurer. The job structure continues to function without any demonstrated need to change it.
George, your two minutes are up.
Okay.
So finish up, please.
Okay. Our right to elect the position, particularly in a town of our size where government does not need to be the size of those in larger towns, is a concept that informs how we as a country govern ourselves, and as such is not the right that we are obligated to surrender to local interests.
Thank you, George. Are there, is there any? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Greg Kennan, 129 Hollis Street. I urge you to support this warrant article and amendment to the town bylaws. I have the greatest respect for Town Collector Nancy Hess, but to be clear, this article does not affect her office. The person whose office is affected has not spoken against it, and to my understanding, does not oppose this article. The most frequent argument we’ve heard is that we need checks and balances, and that sounds very noble, and as a general proposition, it’s true, but let’s drill into that a little bit more. What’s never been articulated is what has to be checked and what has to be balanced. The Treasurer position is a very highly regulated position. It’s audited, and it’s subject to all kinds of safeguards. So what checks and balances will be added to that by electing? I suggest that there are, really are none. This is not a big-town, small-town issue. Many other small towns in Middlesex County and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts appoint their Treasurers. The town of Holly in Franklin County has a population of 331. They appoint their Treasurer. There’s nothing about Sherburne that makes it different from these other towns who have seen the wisdom of appointing their Treasurer. And what I think is very telling is that the Department of Revenue, which is the state agency charged with overseeing the financial integrity of towns, recommends that the Treasurer be appointed. So let’s listen to the recommendation of these experts and learn from the experiences in other towns. Let’s vote to approve this article. The Select Board favors it, and the Advisory Committee favors it as well. Thank you.
Is there any further comment? Okay, then I will close debate. Are we set to go here? Okay. And I would ask you to please vote now. Motion passes 115 to 70. Article 22. Establish Quarterly Tax Payment System. This is a majority article.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Aronian.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 57(c), for the purpose of establishing a quarterly tax payment system for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and continuing thereafter.
Second.
We have a presentation.
Article 22 will change the town from a semi-annual to a quarterly property tax billing system. The town’s fiscal year begins July 1, when a disproportionate number of bills come due. But under the current semi-annual system, that is precisely the time when available cash is lowest because the first tax payment is not due until November 1. A lesser cash shortage occurs in early spring because the second tax payment is not due until May 1. Quarterly tax billing will address these annual cycles of cash shortages Quarterly tax billing will address these annual cycles of cash shortages by smoothing cash flow throughout the year, with approximately one-quarter of revenue due three months earlier in the fall, and one-quarter of revenue due three months earlier in late winter. Smoother cash flow will reduce the need to budget the cost of short-term external borrowing, and the town can also benefit from six-month additional interest income. Smoother cash flow will also reduce reliance on the stopgap measure of borrowing from reserve funds to cover operating expenses. In a quarterly tax system, the first two bills, due August 1 and November 1, are estimated amounts. The second two bills, due February 1 and May 1, are adjusted once the tax rate has been set. Under our current semi-annual system, the assessors feel pressure to set the tax rate as early as possible, so that November bills can be mailed early and with luck, paid early to help relieve the summer/fall cash crunch. Quarterly billing will give the assessors more time to complete their work and assure its accuracy, because the tax rate need not be set until the third bill. An owner's total property tax bill for the fiscal year will be the same whether quarterly or semi-annual billing is used. Now what will quarterly tax billing mean for property owners? More than half of residents indicated in our online survey that their property taxes are paid by their mortgage lenders from escrow accounts. For them, nothing will be different, but importantly, the town, rather than the mortgage lender, will benefit from any interest earned. For those who pay directly to the town, we believe that tax rate reduction from reduced short-term borrowing costs and potential interest income for the town will help offset the investment income an individual taxpayer would forego by earlier payments. And third, seasonal income earners, such as farmers, have expressed concern about aligning their income stream with quarterly billing. Our article intentionally delays the start date of quarterly billing one year out to fiscal year 2021, so that seasonal income earners can plan well in advance. Commercial billing services have advised us that the most cost-effective way to handle quarterly property tax billing is to make two mailings, each with two bills in one envelope. The extra expense of quarterly billing is essentially, one, the cost of printing but not mailing additional bills, and two, the cost of processing additional payments. Using data provided by the collector's office, we estimate that the additional expense of quarterly property tax bills is $587 per year. Contrast that with the $7,000 which we annually budget and tax for short-term borrowing, and the six-month additional interest income that could be earned by the town. We believe that quarterly tax billing is clearly cost-effective. Yes, there will be some confusion and lost bills in the beginning, but these problems can be mitigated by robust public information campaign. Quarterly tax billing is recommended by the Mass. DOR, Collins Institute, and Municipal Management Services. All of the ten smallest Middlesex County towns, except Sherburne, are quarterly property tax billers. 114 of the 170 Massachusetts towns with populations under 10,000 bill quarterly, and 85% of all Massachusetts towns bill quarterly. It's a smart solution to a serious recurring problem. One advisory member commented at the advisory hearing, "It's overdue." We agree, and we urge you to support Article 22.
Thank you. I believe we have a presentation in opposition.
You can see I'm a glutton for punishment. Déjà vu all over again. This is still a solution to a problem for which we have not yet passed the litmus test. We have not had to do excessive borrowing to meet our obligations. As backup, we have always had a borrowing ready just in case, but quarterly billing is not going to eliminate having to budget funds for borrowing. We have had a few anxious moments, but serious conversations with advisory, the accountant and finance director, and the finance team has made us all recognize that free cash is neither free nor cash, and a few gentle corrections to its use should set us back on track to a little less angst in anticipation of those first tax payments. We have not forfeited any interest for lack of funds to meet payment deadlines that offer big savings. We have not had to send out our tax bills late delaying cash flow. On the contrary, we usually get them out early and beg those who can to pay them a few weeks early to jumpstart the cash flow. Our taxpayers have stepped up every year. Asking taxpayers to send their checks a few weeks early is different than requiring everyone to send them three months early. Even if it only lets half the taxpayers keep their money to get their own interest, any interest the town would gain would not move the needle on the individual tax bill. Because of amazing cooperation between advisory, the finance departments, the town clerk, the Select Board, and you, the taxpayers, we have been able to have the kind of money management that allows us to function successfully on a semi-annual system, and maintain a AAA bond rating, especially unique for a small town. Anyone falls down on their part of that process, and we may have to rethink, but this is a drastic step. Even the DOR, in their later reports, acknowledged that going to quarterlies may not be as economical for the smaller towns. Different towns have gone to quarterly billing for different reasons. We should not go because everybody else is doing it. I followed up with one of the towns studied, and learned that they use the same vendor for their accounting and collection systems as we do, but besides taxes, only collect for the water department. We have centralized collections as recommended by the DOR, rare in small communities, and only added three hours per week of clerical help to do so. This has gotten proceeds out of department desk drawers and to the treasurer in a timely fashion. We collect funds for burn permits, fire department inspection, building department, gas, plumbing, wiring, dog licenses, boat permits, pond stickers, council on aging programs, recreation programs, swim lessons, conservation fees, to the tune of over $600,000 last year. That's a lot of 10, 20, 75, and 100-dollar transactions. If you think adding close to 2,000 more transactions twice a year passing through this office is not going to have an impact, you are sadly mistaken. These are all funds that must be processed, accounted for, and reconciled. The first bill, whether one or two parts, is mailed late June for an August 1 due date. Sherburne vacates for vacation. A bill mailed to an address where people are away is returned to us to re-mail. The second, if not included in the first, gets mailed the end of September for November 1. But as both bills are based on the prior year's tax, is not really half and does not return as much money to the coffers as an actual bill. This itself may have unintended consequences. The third bill is mailed between Christmas and New Year's. Again, Sherburne vacates. This also may have the fourth payment slip included. Again, if people are away, another mailing is required. It is supposed to be an actual tax bill with the actual tax rate and any increase from the prior year, but since so many cities and towns have gone to quarterlies, the DOR has difficulty getting everyone's rate set by the deadline, so pushes for towns to start the process earlier and earlier. The third quarter is due by February 1. At the same time, we are doing up close to 5,000 excise tax bills, and the first pond transfer stickers, burn permits, dog licenses, and lifetime learning registrations. Quarterly billing will increase costs to the town, and there is no going back. Once you invest in the changes necessary in computer programs, educating the public, et cetera, going back will not be reasonable, just as going forward before it's absolutely necessary is not reasonable. Please vote no.
Thank you. Is there any further comment, questions?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Morrell.
The Select Board voted unanimously to support changing to quarterly tax bills. We feel it's time that we smooth our cash flow. This last year, the only reason we avoided a short-term bond was because we borrowed early on an entire fire truck that we didn't need to at the time, so we, it just doesn't make any sense, especially since over 50% of the town, the mortgage company is just holding that money anyway. We should have that sooner, in the early part of the fiscal year. Getting a first tax bill in August is really going to help the finance office in smoothing our cash flow in the town.
Karen Lane, 15 Meadow Brook Road, Sherburne. I don't have a dog in this fight, because we pay our taxes through our mortgage. However, by one, we do not know the impact yet of the tax bill on people in Sherburne in the change in the property tax law, in our federal income taxes. We all have taxes higher than $10,000 a year. I am concerned that you are going to be billing people when they have to pay their federal income taxes. And I'm also concerned that you're going to be billing people at the time when they are going to be getting bonuses from the year previously, and they do not know what their income is. And the other thing is the graying of this town. How is this going to affect the elderly citizens of this town who are on fixed incomes, who no longer have mortgages, but have huge tax bills, and now they have to budget to pay their bill four times a year, as well as dealing with the impact of the federal government's change that has decimated the states that have high property taxes like ourselves? So I would say vote no on this bill this year, because we don't know what the ramifications of the federal income tax changes are on the incomes of the people of Sherburne.
Thank you. We have more comments here. Robert?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. There are approximately 2,000 bills that go out. That's more than the 1,700 households, because some households get more than one, and sometimes there are other types of bills than just the real estate bill that goes out. I doubt that the tax office can process 2,000 bills twice a year for under $600. I think that's a gross underestimation of the cost, and I think that in addition to that feature, if you send out two bills at the same time, I'm confident that the first bill will probably get paid by the majority of people on time, but that second bill that gets put in the drawer, how many people are going to remember that three months later? And if they don't, what's going to happen? Well, there's going to be more work for the tax office, for them to send out, you haven't paid your bill, and in addition, because you didn't pay your bill, now you're going to have to pay more. So we're going to end up paying more money, each of us individually, and it's going to be even more work for the tax office. So I think that there's a significant increase in cost here. I don't think $600 comes anywhere near the true cost. Thank you.
Up back there.
Sarah Raggy, 17 Abbey Road. I'd like to ask to move the question.
So, I'm moving the question. There is, excuse me, I need a second, first of all. All right? No debate on this question, and we need a two-thirds vote to move the question. So we are not voting now on the question itself, we are voting on moving the question.
What does that mean?
It means that, okay, if we move the question, that cuts off debate. No one else will be able to comment on the main motion, which is the question at hand, on whether to move to quarterly tax payments or not. So the thing that we're going to vote on now, and I'm asking the techies down front here to see if they can put a slide together quickly for us.
I got it.
Okay, because it is a two-thirds vote. So when I ask you to vote, you are voting on whether we are moving the question, which means that I will go directly to voting on this question with no more opportunity for debate.
We only have one question to hear.
The question has been moved, and this must be considered. Please vote now. All right? So we, okay, we are voting on moving the question. Okay. If the motion fails, this would not be a two-thirds majority, so debate may continue. All right? Jean?
Can you hear me? I'm sort of tall, so I don't know. I would support very strongly what Robert just told you, but I want to add a little something else to that. In the write-up about the quarterly tax billing, it says it would reduce the assessor's workload. I was in the assessor's office for over 30 years, so I think I know a little bit about what goes on there, and it would not. It would make more work for the assessors. I also have talked to a gal who is doing quarterly billing, and she is the head assessor in another town, and she agrees with me, it would be considerably more work, because the assessor has to prepare lists twice instead of once, and it wouldn't reduce their work, it would not give them any more time to do their work after it's in place. Also, if you recall, some of you will, back when quarterly billing first came about, Ruth Johnson and Pete Hoagland did a very thorough job looking into it, particularly from the interest income. We heard that the town would have more income coming into the town earlier, and they'd be making quite a bit of money. Now, the interest rates back then, when they did this research, was considerably higher than the interest rate today, which is almost nothing. So it's not going to save the town money, it's going to cost the town money because you're doing more work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other further debate? Oh, yes, we have.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Greg Kennon, 129 Hollis Street. And I just wanted to respond very briefly to a couple of the things that we have heard here. I do support this amendment. I think it's well-passed due, and it's something that we ought to vote. Just keep in mind, this will not affect overall tax bills. The tax you will pay over the course of the year will not change. It will just change the timing of two of the payments. We heard statements about the town asking residents voluntarily to pay their bills early, so that the town has enough to cover its expenses. Is that a good fiscal practice to rely on voluntary early payments just so the town can pay its bills? I respectfully suggest it is not. And let's talk about the benefits here. The town, and it's set forth in the Advisory Committee report, the town potentially will benefit to the tune of $100,000 from moving to quarterly billing. Let's do a back-of-the-envelope calculation. $7 million will be collected three months earlier, twice during the year. $7 million at a 3% interest rate is $210,000. A quarter of that for three months is 50-odd thousand dollars. Twice a year is $100,000. So potentially $100,000 in interest savings that the bank and mortgage company now gets will flow to the benefit of the town. This is not really a question. This is something that should be approved. The Select Board and the Advisory Committee both favor it. The Department of Revenue, same Department of Revenue that is charged with overseeing good fiscal management on the part of towns, recommends quarterly billing. Let's vote to support this. Thank you.
Further comment?
I just wanted to respond to Robert Johnson's comment that he thought that the estimate I just wanted to respond to Robert Johnson's comment, that he thought that the estimate of the additional cost was a gross, grossly low number. As I said in our remarks, we actually worked with data that we got from the collector's office. We got a price for what the additional forms would be. We even added in the cost of using additional toner. We looked at the, the estimated how many particularly bills could be processed in a minute, and we received two different answers, and we actually went for the middle. We averaged it. And we asked the question, well, who is it that processes these, these bills? We were told that all the people in the department do. So we actually took the per-hour wage that is paid in the department, which goes from, and we have two-year-old data that we're looking at, but $40.45 an hour is the high for the collector, and the permanent part-timer is down at $22.65. We averaged that out, so we use that as the per-hourly cost of this, and that is really the genesis of where we got that number.
We have some comments up back.
This is Bill Seymour, 25 Saddlebrook Road, and Chairman of the Board of Assessors. The assessors discussed this and voted to hold a neutral position and are happy to work with whatever outcome.
Thank you. Another comment?
Artis Lavelle, 32 Maple Street. With all due respect, with respect to my friend Craig Kennon and others, I strenuously disagree. It's hard, hard for us to pay our taxes, most of us who live here. And having to go to this pay schedule is harder, in fact. It's not just no big deal to have to pay four times a year instead of two times a year. It is a big deal. And I believe, I know, some people choose to have their more, their taxes rolled into their mortgages to make sure they're paid. As a matter of fact, you know, who wouldn't rather have that interest in your own pocket? So I think it will make it harder on the taxpayer, as well as the debate about whether or not it's going to cost more money to process these bills and the returns, and so on and so forth. Thank you.
Is, oh, sorry, Nancy. If you can wait, Nancy, I did say that I would hear everybody first. Peter, unless you wish to.
Peter Black, 55 Maple Street. I'm, anytime someone tells me that there's a free lunch, I get suspicious. I know it's going to cost me money to pay my tax bill four times a year instead of twice, and I don't have a mortgage, but if I did, it would cost my mortgage company money. And, you know, they're in it for a profit, so they'll find another way to get that. They're not going to pay the town $100,000 a year and say, oh, this is so nice. It's going to cost us money. This is a tax raise. So I think if you're honest about it and say it's going to cost something, we can go forward. But when you say that we get $100,000 and it costs you nothing, that's not true. I'm going to vote against this.
Nancy?
I just wanted to comment on, on the analysis of the cost in my office. I was asked how many seconds it takes to enter a bill into the computer. That doesn't take into consideration what we have to do as far as getting that bill in front of the computer. There's more to it than, than that. And also, the idea that you're going to have $7 million sitting in the bank to gather interest. My understanding is that $7 million is going to pay bills sooner rather than later, and therefore, won't be sitting in the bank gathering all that interest. So again, I urge you to vote no on this article.
Is there any other comment or debate? Okay. So are we set to go with the voting side? Okay, then I would ask you to please vote now. Okay, can we, can we get the numbers here, please? All right, motion passes. Article 23. Amend the general bylaws with respect to illicit discharges.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend--
Excuse me, Brenner. As people are leaving, would you please leave quietly? Thank you very much.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend Chapter 25 of the general bylaws, comprehensive stormwater management, by inserting a provision addressing illicit discharges to the stormwater management system, with text to be inserted, shown in bold underline, and text to be deleted, shown in strike-through type, as set forth in the handout entitled 2019 Spring Annual Town Meeting, Article 23, Illicit Discharges, provided at the April 23, 2019 Annual Town Meeting.
Would people please be quiet? Thank you.
Second.
All right. I believe that Eric Johnson from the Select Board has a few words to say about this.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Select Board voted unanimously to approve this bylaw change. It really is, its genesis is the EPA permit that was issued this last July. It had the unprecedented effect essentially of regulating the water quality of the stormwater that goes through the town's stormwater system. It's called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It originally was used to regulate wastewater treatment plants and factories, and now it's regulating Sherburne stormwater. So it's kind of a big deal. At the genesis of this, at the heart of this bylaw change, it regulates new development, has greater criteria. It regulates illicit discharges, and regulates kind of how, how we enforce that. It is an important bylaw. It protects our waterways, and, which is the heart of all of our drinking water, as well as our recreation as well. I think the Planning Board had some specific presentation on it. Oh, the one thing I wanted to add is that the, what you see here is some bylaw changes. There's been a handout. It had to be tweaked a little bit to make sure it was compliant with the, with the EPA permit. I think, maybe John can talk a little more about that.
John Higley is going to make a presentation on this now. Thank you.
You all got a handout, or most of you got a handout, that's a, that shows the edits to what appears in the printed town warrant. So rather than go through that whole thing, we have a few slides to just point out the changes between what's printed in the town warrant and the final that's being voted on. So as Mr. Johnson just said, this amends our, our general bylaw for comprehensive stormwater management by adding illicit discharge that is now required. It was passed in 2016, and it becomes effective in, I think it's July of 2018. So this is our first chance to vote it and add it into our current general bylaw. So that's what we're doing here, just bringing us, bringing our current bylaw up to date soon as we can, which is tonight. So the first change is that date. It's effective, what appears in the town, in the warrant, the change in the handout is July 1, 2018. That's on page 23. The second is just a typo thing, and we've just passed tonight an article that would allow, that allows making typo, type of corrections, but on page 23 and 24, Section 4.1, it, the, the, the lettering of these items was incorrect, and this corrects it, so now it reads A, B, C, and D. So that's just a typo correction from what's in your printed warrant. The, the next one is on page 25, which is Section 5.3, Stormwater Management Handbook. And the addition is that it also references NPDs permits, and also that the Planning Board will utilize the provisions of MS4 general permit and other NPDs permits. So the reason, this is, the, the Planning Board's role in this is, if somebody's got a development, that part of the criteria for deciding to issue a permit or not is that they have to follow the rules of the stormwater management. So, and our current bylaw says that we can look at the Stormwater Management Handbook as a reference for what that criteria is. So we, we want, as Mr. Johnson stated, we want to update that so that it also includes NPDs and MS4. NPDs is the, is the, the federal MS4 is, is one of those, is, is, is part of that. So we want to be able to reference the best. Right now, the handbook may lag in terms of the criteria and the, and what's required in stormwater management, and so this language allows us to reference MS4 and NPDs, so that we're current and comply with our own, with Sherburne's own MS4 permit. And then the last, I think it's the last one, is on page 25, we're just adding the, the name of CM and D, and then, as we've already voted tonight, that will then go back and be changed to DPW next. But right now, we're just voting on this correction. So, so this is the last, on page 26, the language in the handout states this, and this is language that just says that, it's the illicit discharge language that we need to have in, in our article. It was left out in the handout version, in the, in the town warrant article version. It's corrected here in the handout. So this is language that's required by the MS4 permit. So that's it. And, thank you.
Okay. Is--
I don't, I don't know if I can.
Is there a comment or--
By the way, this language is in your handout.
Are, are you in line, Michael? Yeah, okay.
Michael Lee, 28 Wildwood Drive. Is the intent of this bylaw change to make it illegal to have a pool filter that is backwashed, and you discharge that backwash out to your property?
Does someone--
I know, that's just to be a regular ground discharge. This is only regulate if you discharge it to like a catch basin in front of your house in the street. That is, that is actually the town's MS4 system. It's actually the catch basin system, and with the pipes in the catch basins and so on.
So how do we, we know when we're discharging that it's not going to lead to one of those spots?
If you're just discharging to your lawn, it will, it will not make it to the catch basin. You'd be fine.
Darrell?
Darrell Beardsley, 54 Forest Street. And ironically, I also have a pool comment. Under 4.3A, it says, for things that are strictly prohibited, dechlorinated swimming pool discharges somewhat implies that chlorinated would be okay, which actually, from an environmental standpoint, would be more problematic. So I was just wondering whether it's, either there's a specific reason for that, or a simplification to just swimming pool discharges would be appropriate.
Does anyone have the answer to Darrell's question?
Yeah, I mean, really, B covers everything. A was called out, because, because some places do allow dechlorinated swimming pools to be, to be discharged. So it was basically called out. You almost don't need A with B in there. If you look at B, it says any discharges illicitly put into the street. So I think that would be covered under there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comment, questions, Susie?
Yes, Susan Tyler, Western Avenue. I'm just wondering, do we still have quorum?
Yes, we have actually made account.
Okay, because I'd like to have a question up there. Will we hit one if we're still here?
Thank you. Oh, I, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah. Okay. So, majority vote on this, and we're set to go here? Okay. So I would ask you to vote now on this question. Motion passes. 142 to 7. Article 24. Amend the zoning bylaws with respect to accessory apartments, and this would be a two-thirds vote.
Madam Moderator?
Whoever that was. Mr. Gallatano. Thank you.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to amend Section 3.2, subsection 2 of the zoning bylaws with insertion shown in bold underline and deletion shown in strike-through type, as printed in Article 24 of the warrant, except that the following shall not be added to the end of subsection A7, quote, "Such special permit shall automatically terminate upon the sale, transfer, or other change in ownership of the property of which such unit forms a part." Second.
Addie May, do you have a presentation? I think you do.
Addie May, West 1 Jackson Road, member of the Planning Board. The, the Planning Board has voted unanimously to support this article, and, and we are, we accept the change in language recommended by advisory. The purpose of the article this year is to simply clarify a few things that, to bring it back in line with the intent of the accessory apartment bylaw. It's fairly straightforward. The town supported this last year. As you can see, the language changes are fairly minor, simply just removing something that caused more confusion than was intended, removing the word existing, and removing the date that was applied, to bring it back in line with the original intent of allowing for a more naturally affordable housing throughout our town, and to provide an opportunity for seniors to age in place, providing opportunities potentially for, for families that are divorced, for both families to live, continue to live in town. There's a number of reasons that this is a good thing, and we're not, and as again, I've said, town supported this last year. We're not changing any of that. We're just clarifying some language items.
Back you, Addie May.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mike?
The Board of Select unanimously supports this. This is a great way to have another, as Paul put it before, another tool in the toolbox, to get affordable housing into the town of Sherburne. And by affordable there, I mean a diversity of housing stock that would be suitable for people who work in town perhaps, and other people who, who right now don't have good chance to have accommodations in Sherburne.
Okay, this, right, because this is amending a zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. We set to go here? Okay, thank you. So I would ask you to vote now on this. Passes by two-thirds. The number is 132 to 10. I'm just going to make a statement here, because I am leaving the stage, because a family member is making a presentation on the next article, but we are down to the last three articles, and two of those articles are citizens' petitions. Someone did raise the question of a quorum, and so we have one now. The quorum is 100. But I would ask you, if possible, to remain for these last three articles, particularly because they are citizens' petitions. And if we don't have a quorum, we have to come back Thursday night, and people have made these petitions, and we'd like to hear them. We're at Article 25, Authorization to Acquire CS--
I move favorable action and that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase eminent domain, or otherwise, the fee or lesser interest in all or part of the CSX property from the vicinity of Whitney Street North to the Framingham Town Line. That's assessor's map number one, parcel 32. For open space and recreation purposes, specifically for a so-called rail trail, and thereafter, construct the so-called rail trail, thereon provided, I'm sorry, provided however, that such acquisition and construction shall be funded by environmental bond bill funds made available to the town for expenditure without further appropriation, donation, gift, and/or other private federal or state grants made available to the town for such purposes, and to accept on behalf of the town any funds so donated, grant that are gifted, and further to authorize the Select Board to execute all instruments, including deeds, leases, licenses, restrictions, donation agreements, grant agreements, contracts, and/or other agreements, upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deem appropriate, and to take all other action as may be necessary to effectuate the vote to be taken hereunder. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I understand there's a presentation. Ross?
John Higley, 14 Sibley Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously in favor of this article.
Thank you.
Rob Wolf, 31 Cedar Hill Lane. I'm on a working group that John Higley and the Planning Board organized. Our goal is to extend the Upper Charles Rail Trail through Sherburne. The trail currently consists of six or a bit more miles of paved trail in Milford, six miles of stone dust trail in Holliston, and Sherburne owns one-quarter mile from the Holliston Line to Whitney Street. That little section is currently undeveloped, but there's plans in place and grant money already awarded for construction of parking spots at Whitney Farms entrance, and a handicapped compliant path to the trail at that point. Here's the map of the, the trail now. The green section is the paved section in Milford. The purple section is the section in Holliston. You can see there's some little bits in Holliston, in Hopkinton, that are under construction, and the rest is just possible future plans. Here's a couple of pictures of the Holliston section, which is really quite nice. It was kind of an eyesore beforehand. There was a lot of littering, dumping, trail being torn up by motorbikes and things, and it's really a nice community resource there. There's the center, and there's the bridge approaching Route 16. So, the proposal is to authorize the acquisition of the further 1.4 miles that goes from Whitney Street to the Framingham Line. The estimated cost of required environmental studies, the purchase, and some improvements is in the environmental bond bill, authorized but not allocated yet. 100% of the bond bill funds are from the state. There's no local matching funds required, and there's the possibility of getting other funds and donations if needed. CSX is also offering another four-tenths of a mile north of that to Framingham. Here's the, here's the proposal from CSX, and let me just point out a few things. There's Whitney Street at the bottom. The rail line is a single track going up, and then it widens out into about six sidings. And then, this right here at the power line right away is the Framingham Line. Then, there's a small section in Framingham, and then it widens out again into the CSX Engineering Yard. If Framingham buys this small piece, there's a possible connection to Bates Road, which go out to 126, and give a nice, easy path to the commuter rail station. You can also see the Barber Reservation here, and there's trails that used to go across here, but they're sort of blocked right now. Here's the assessor's map showing the butters. The light green that looks yellow there is town-owned land, including the Barber Reservation. The dark green is conservation land owned by the Rural Land Foundation, and the red is the N-Star Power Line right away. So, you can see that almost all the butters are conservation land, including a lot of Here's, as the trail enters Sherburne, you can see the stone dust ends at the Holliston border. It's Dopping Brook, which flows under the trail on a culvert, forms the border. And then, the first part of the trail in Sherburne is unimproved, but it's in very good shape. And then, it gets a bit wet as you approach Whitney Street, and that's where you may end up detouring around on the easement in the Whitney Farms property. Here it is just north of Whitney Street, and then, as you go farther north, it starts to widen out into sidings, and there's a lot of wetlands formed by beaver activity in behind the Barber Reservation. So, just to summarize, there's very few butters, which is mostly conservation land. There's a good possibility of linking the Bay Circuit Trail from the Barber Reservation across into Ashland, avoiding the current detour on Whitney Street, which is a dangerous road with not much shoulder. It's consistent with recommendations in the Open Space and Recreation Plan and the Master Plan. The Framingham section, if Framingham gets on board, will link out towards the commuter rail station. It's possibly in the future that can even link on the rail bed all the way to the rail station. The, it's possible that this would not move forward based on the amount that's in the bond bill, but we hope that the amount estimated is good, and that the Select Board would be able to negotiate a purchase and sale with CSX contingent on the funds becoming available from the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion questions? Yes. Richard?
Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. I'm certainly in favor of the acquisition. I'm not in favor of, of passing, of supporting a motion that is not ironclad, and I do mean ironclad, that no town funds are involved in this. It's not quite clear to me from the motion that that's true. I wonder if we, is, is this the motion? Because that's not, I think, what was actually read.
No, that's not the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to hear the motion again?
I would, yeah. It, it says there, to authorize Select Board to acquire by gift, purchase, and I'm not sure what the nature of that purchase would be, and I don't, I'm afraid, I just don't understand enough about this environment, or bond bill funds, and whose money it is, and who authorizes, and how much, all that, and what kind of negotiations involved. I, I think I need some more clarity before I can support this, and I may not be alone in that.
Sure.
Darren Klein, KP Law, through the moderator. So, there is no, there is no appropriation as part of this motion, so the town is not spending any funds. So, in my opinion, the language is ironclad in that regard. If there was going to be an expenditure of funds, town funds, there would need to be another town meeting article at a subsequent town meeting. So, this art, this motion is ironclad in that any type of acquisition would be 100% not from town funds.
Are there any other comments or questions? If not, we'll proceed to the vote. If you could, place your vote now. 152 to 0. Motion passes.
This is a citizen petition, supporting a new position of sustainability coordinator.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Si.
I move favorable action and that the town vote to request and recommend that the Select Board create the regular part-time position of sustainability coordinator, and appoint a sustainability coordinator whose compensation shall be fixed in a manner consistent with the personnel bylaw, and further, that the Select Board shall fix the sustainability coordinator's compensation in a manner consistent with the personnel bylaw and related plan, and within the amount annually appropriated for that purpose, and that the Select Board and town administrator be requested and recommended to take whatever actions are necessary to effectuate the purposes of article 26 as printed in the warrant. Second.
I believe we have a presentation from the petitioners.
Tonight, we have an opportunity to direct the town to hire a part-time sustainability coordinator. We're asking for your vote on this important initiative, which has been given a recommend favorable action by both the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. Sherburne, a green community since 2011, has been working to reduce our emissions and to increase the use of renewable energy. And although our town officials have made admirable progress, town employees working on this all have full-time responsibilities. A coordinator's role, sole role, is sustainability. That means getting grants and financial incentives for renewed energy, renewable energy, and carbon emission reduction projects. It means measuring and reporting on progress against our goals. It means working with residents and businesses to educate and to recommend cost-effective energy reduction projects, coordinate and collaborate with projects across town departments, and a lot more. So, tonight, I can cover three main topics. What is Sherburne's carbon footprint? What's the cost and return on investment of a coordinator? And at a high level, what can a coordinator do for our town? Since we became a green community in 2011, we have reduced our carbon emissions approximately 25% over our 2009 emissions, and that's laudable progress. The fact is, however, if you look at this chart, that we have not continued to make that kind of progress. As you can see, the chart is essentially flat since 2012. Now, the town's done very good work on municipal buildings, but in order to achieve significant levels of carbon reduction, we need a dedicated resource who can expand the scope of work to include other municipal opportunities, but also residential and commercial opportunities. But, why is 25% of a reduction, which we've already achieved, not sufficient? It's because we haven't achieved significant carbon reduction since 2013. And in 2013, this data shows, and this is the most recent data available, that Sherburne residents were emitting 80-plus tons of carbon dioxide per household annually. And if you look at this, that's much higher than other towns in our area. With the reality of climate change becoming increasingly clear, the time is now to act. The Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change predicts that we must reduce our carbon footprint by 50% by 2030, and 100% by 2050, or we may face irreversible climate disruption and changes. We need to do our part. In the short time allocated for statements tonight, we cannot begin to cover all the data that we've accumulated on the compelling return on investment, or the wide range of grants and incentives that are available, or the scope of municipal, commercial, and residential activities that coordinators in other towns have achieved. But, we can give you a few facts that are relevant. Sustainability coordinators in other towns around Massachusetts have achieved between 4.2 and 8.3 times the salary and benefits of the position. In other words, if we were to hire a sustainability coordinator at $39,000, which is what we proposed to Advisory, we could reasonably expect a return of $163,800 brought to town annually via grants, incentives, and savings. And that's a low-end expectation. High-end is twice that. But, I want to be real clear. This is not all about money. This is about the scope of the initiatives that a coordinator can bring to our town, over and above what our town officials, who have full-time responsibility, our volunteer groups, which have been very active, or town committees can achieve. So, what kind of initiatives? What can a coordinator do for our town? Other towns have realized these kinds of results. They've produced significant reduction in energy costs and ongoing savings through infrastructure projects, such as installing energy-efficient systems, LED lighting, solar arrays, electrical vehicle procurement, and a wide range of residential programs. They've secured grants and incentives for sustainability and climate vulnerability mitigation. They freed up town officials who are working their regular jobs while attempting to address climate, climate change and carbon reduction. They track and report on the town and residential energy use and energy reduction. They've arranged electricity aggregation, or the block purchase of electricity, lowering the cost for both the town and its residents. They've promoted residential carbon reduction through things like mass save audits, solarization programs, renewable electricity, composting, things of that nature. They partner with selectmen, energy committees, facilities, volunteers, and other town committees.
Fred?
They run public forums. So, tonight, what we are asking for is your vote of yes on article 26 for a sustainability coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Durentzis.
The Board of Selectmen have unanimously endorsed this article, and I wanted to urge your support on the following basis. In connection with the work that I have been doing at the State House, I have been told that there have been opportunities for the town to obtain grants that we have not applied for, that we have not pursued. I've had a discussion with the Green Communities Coordinator, that there are funds that a community like Sherburne could pursue. I believe the premise behind this article, that a dedicated employee or worker who can apply to, for these grants, will, in, in actuality, produce dollars for this community. And as part of producing dollars for Sherburne, we will be improving the environment for the community, and for the state, and for our nation. I think we're all responsible to make our environment safe, and for make our environment better. This is an opportunity to do a win-win for the town and for our environment. I urge you to support this.
Back of the room, please. Neil?
Neil Kessler, 43 Page Farm Road. First, just wanted to say that last week, the Conservation Commission voted unanimously to support this article, and I would just echo what Mr. Durentzis said, that we should be looking at any avenue where we can add money to our bottom line instead of, you know, looking to other sources. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is that Sean clean earlier tonight, we, we had a, you know, requested funds for tree mortality and tree damage, and one of the things that interests me most about this sustainability coordinator position is just how much we can do in terms of resiliency, where we've got issues with tree mortality, storm damage, moth damage, we've got floods, we've got all these kinds of sort of negative things that a sustainability coordinator can come in and not only help us find funds for, but also just help us plan better, and, and build into the future a way to deal with these things, even to the point of, you know, what kinds of trees can be planted so that they're more resilient to bigger storms down the road. And I would also just echo that this isn't only about dollars and cents, but just about a lot of issues that affect the town in terms of wetlands and, and environmental things overall. So, I would just urge the support for this article. Thank you.
Robert?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. I have a question, and that is, what if sometime in the future, three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, we aren't getting a positive return from having this position? Is there an out? Or is this position irrevocable and goes on forever? Or do we have to have another town meeting vote to abolish it? So, question.
Is there somewhere? Okay.
So, with any position that's authorized or made part of the Wage and Classification Plan, or any position authorized by town meeting, it doesn't have to be filled by the Select Board, or if the Town Administrator is the appointing authority, by the Town Administrator. Those are always decisions that are left to the executive branch of the town. So, just because a position's been authorized or is even allowed by your bylaws does not mean it has to be filled. So, to your question, if it wasn't working out, you would have the elected officials of the Select Board be able to make a determination that they just don't want to fill the position, or that they want to lay off the employee, or whatever the situation might be.
I'd point out the language in the citizen petition. The last sentence states that the Select Board may terminate, remove, or suspend the Sustainability Coordinator in accordance of the town's personnel bylaw. So I think it's definitely very specifically in the language.
Michael.
Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street. I agree with everything that everyone has said. I'm in support. I think this is a great idea. I'm just going to briefly speak as your last chair of your Energy Committee, since we have not met for a few years. I spent a lot of time working on the Energy Committee and doing a lot of the projects there that maybe had that first little dent in our energy use a number of years ago. What I'd like to say is that this kind of position, not only could it get money, it will basically leverage a lot of resources that we have in town, such as myself and others who have been on the Energy Committee, who know a lot, are willing to put in time, but we do need somebody to help sort of basically anchor our efforts. It's hard. I did it for a number of years. It's very hard to keep it going without having somebody who's more dedicated to us. And I think there's a lot of volunteer and other kind of abilities in this town that would be greatly leveraged and come forth if this position's around. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any further debate, questions, comments? Okay, then, are we ready to go here? Okay, please vote now. Motion passes, 126 to 23. Article 27, Citizen Petition with Respect to Transparency in Excluding Debt from Prop Two and a Half Limits and Bundling of Capital Projects. Again, I would ask you to please consider staying so that we can maintain a quorum and not have to return. Thank you.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Sherburne Advisory Committee has been informed by the primary petitioner that they do not wish to present this article, and in fact, wish to not move forward with this article. Therefore, I move that no action be taken on this article.
I second that motion.
Is there any comment, controversy, whatever? Okay. This is a yes vote on this is to defeat the article? And, well, yes, and a vote for, yes, that's right. A yes vote moves no action on this. All right. So, we're ready to go, I would ask you to vote now. No action passes, 119 to 5. Article 28, Citizen Petition with Respect to Transparency in the Incursion of Additional Unfunded Liabilities.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Leahy.
I move that no action be taken on Article 28.
Second.
Michael has a presentation here to make.
I know it's late, so in the interest of time, I'll try to move as quickly as possible. I am urging you to vote no to the continued neglect.
Michael, can you identify yourself as a petitioner?
Michael Lee, 28 Wildwood Drive. I urge you to vote no to the continued neglect of our financial commitment to town employees. A few facts, if you're not aware of the town's pension program. Our active and retired employees have earned over $22 million in benefits, yet we've saved less than 50 cents to pay out those future benefits. In 1988, the state mandated that we fix, that these problems be fixed in all towns in Massachusetts. In 30 years, we've made no progress. I'm proposing a simple strategy. When you're in a hole, stop digging. This changed our bylaws, will force budget makers to not passively let this deficit grow. It mandates additional funding above the minimum required by law if and when our auditors determine that the deficit has grown. It honors the principle that the town does not deficit spend for an operating budget item. It ensures that we incur debt only for capital items that have a long-term benefit to town residents today and in the future. Vote yes if you want to continue to prioritize other services over the financial security of town employees when they retire. And I want to point out, the town employees are not eligible for Social Security. Who's financial security? The police officer who patrols our neighborhoods to ensure that we're safe. The educational aide who provides support to an autism, child with autism, so they can continue to be educated in the classroom alongside their peers. The DPW plow driver, who's up at 3A and clearing our major roads so that we can travel safely in the morning. School support staff who feed our kids and maintain our buildings. In fact, all full-time employees of Sherburne who make this a great place to live. Vote yes if you're okay admitting we can't properly manage this obligation, while unlike 51 other towns in the Boston metro area who do a better job with their pension management. Residents' incomes in these towns, I've listed here, are less than half of Sherburne, yet they still figure out a way to better manage their pension plan. Places like Chelsea, Revere, Everett, Maynard. What towns in the Boston metro area have a bigger problem with their pension plan? One, Quincy. And then tied with us are the 30 other towns that participate in the Middlesex Pension Plan Administration. Vote yes if you believe our pension administrators are effectively managing this trust. In 2008, we were told the deficit would stop growing by 2012. In 2012, by 2019. Most recently, we're told it will definitely stop growing by 2021. Vote yes if you want to kick the can down the road and let future Sherburne residents pay for services we receive today. Alternatively, you're okay with using future wages withheld from employees to pay pensions to retirees? And what happens is poorly won pension plans often morph into Ponzi schemes, where dollars come in and they immediately go back out. Vote no if you would want, if you would only work for an employer who is properly funding the pension promises they've made to you. What would you think if your employer, if you found out they were obligated to fix an underfunded pension plan, but in 30 years, they did only the bare minimum required, and your benefits were still just 50 percent funded? Vote no if you want to declare we can and we will do better. You want town employees to know we are just as concerned for their financial security as our own personal well-being. You want to send a message to town leaders that we need to make difficult decisions today, not in 10 or 15 years. Vote no if you want to bond rating agencies to see evidence we're taking steps to preserve our AAA rating. And in their most recent bond rating, they've expressed some concerns about the status of our pension fund. As has happened in Texas, this is a national issue, in the town of Fort Worth. Out west, in Colorado, their pension, their credit ratings at risk. On the East Coast, New Jersey has the second worst credit rating of all states in the country, and Illinois is now at a junk debt status, and they're, it's a mess. So, facts, we can't change the rules governing how the retirement benefits are earned. It's a state mandate. We can't expect the state to fix local problems either. The Boston Globe recently expressed this concern in an article.
Want to wrap it up, Michael, please?
Yep. For every year we delay, the problem compounds. 25 years ago, it was a million-dollar problem. Today, we have a $10.7 million problem. If you vote yes, in 10 years, this could grow to 15, 20, possibly even 25 at the current growth rate.
All right. Wrap it up, please, Michael.
So, I urge you to please vote no, protect our employees, and the neglect of their financial security. Thank you.
Are there, is there any further comment?
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Morrell.
The Select Board voted unanimously to take no action on this article, based on the fact that we are currently, in accordance with state regulations, meeting our pension obligations, and the, and Advisory made a comment earlier tonight about how strapped we are with our operating budgets. This would put a requirement that a certain amount would go into this every year that would then further reduce our operating budgets, or increase taxes.
It would only require money to be put in if the deficit grows worse. If the deficit's growing worse, that means we've been earning benefits from those town employees, but we're choosing not to fund those services we've received this past year at the time. We're saying in five, or 10, or 20 years, we'll take care of that. So, it doesn't, it's just a shell game.
Mr. Williams.
Ben Williams, 10 Wildwood Drive. The Advisory Report says this would put an undue strain on department budget makers, who are already being asked to make budget cuts in their FY '20 budgets. Well, this is a case of you can pay some now, or pay a lot more later. I don't know when we would ever feel like there was too much money, and that we would have plenty to lavish around on pension plans and so forth. There is the opt-out provision on this. It's not a guaranteed thing that we would have to make these supplementary payments. I support the idea. I will vote no on the motion.
Yes.
Scott Embry, 36 Wildwood Drive. I'd like to ask the Advisory Committee, if it continues to grow at recent rates, what leads you to believe we'll be in a better position five or 10 years from now than we are today to draw the line?
Repeat the question one more time. If what, in five years?
If it continues to grow at recent rates, what leads the Advisory to believe we'll be in a better position later than we are now to pay our current responsibilities? You're saying no action, take no action now, because we're doing the minimum required by the state by law. How is this going to get better in the future?
I would respond that, as we had our discussions about this article, and about the obligations that we have to the town's employees, we're aware of the obligations, and as we think about the longer-term financial planning for the town and our obligations that we have to fill, I guess I would say that we are aware of it, however, by forcing this mandate, by forcing this mandate on the taxpayers in town, you've kind of taken away some of the flexibility and tools that the budget makers in town have, the treasurer has in financing. In a way, to me, why I voted again to take no action here, I feel as though there was a bit of a awakening, maybe, to this problem that we're facing, but I didn't want to necessarily limit how we can handle the overall budget due to this one aspect. That, look, there's other problems that this town has financially, right? And if you were to put limits on the actions that one could take to handle all these smaller issues that we face, then there may not be money to do the things that we need to do day-to-day to run the town. So, again, I, to me personally, it was an awakening to the issue, and it made all of us have discussion about longer-term planning, but I don't know that putting this, putting this article in place, I don't know if this is the best solution for it. It removes a lot of flexibility for the other aspects of the town's finances that are also in trouble.
Richard. You can respond afterwards, Michael, okay? I want to give people who haven't had a chance to talk yet.
Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. I'm in favor of the article against the motion, and I can think of some better ways to use $5,000 that we decided to spend for electronic voting.
Someone at the rear.
Pat Mulhall, 48 Greenwood Street. I'm confused. Is a yes note, is a yes vote mean that I agree with no action be taken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Michael.
Mr. Leahy has commented about the need to have financial flexibility, and the bylaw has a provision that if, if the Advisory feels that for some reason, the mandated amount to be amortized was not affordable in any particular year's budget, then a warrant article would be put on the ballot, and you, the residents of town, the citizen legislators, at that time could say, yes, we're willing to continue to defer changes to the, or we're willing to defer increased costs to the pensions to a future point. It just makes it a public vote, just like we vote on fire trucks and wastewater treatment facilities and a whole, whole range of things. So it does not remove financial flexibility. It makes it visible, it makes it transparent.
Is there any further comment? Yes, Mr. Durentis.
I want to point out that this problem is one that's faced by all the communities in the state and the state itself. And so, there have been many discussions, which I have participated in, involving trying to find statewide solutions. So one of the things that might change over the next few years is that as we work collaboratively with many communities to try and solve this, we think that there are ways to reduce, manage, or otherwise make it easier for the municipalities in Massachusetts to deal with this issue. I would suggest deferring action on this article. Let's see what we can do on the state level.
Are there any other comments? Okay, then, we will, are we ready to go with this? Okay, remember that a yes vote is for no action. A no vote is to pass the citizen's petition. Or no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. The, yes, a no vote opens the opportunity for a positive vote to pass the petition. A no action must be defeated before. Okay, we are voting now. Please vote. A yes is for no action. Motion passes, 79 to 41. Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, to dissolve the meeting. Motion to dissolve. Motion to dissolve.